This conference will now be recorded.
Would you please rise and join me in prayer for our invocation? Dear Lord and Father, while we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the mayor, administrator staff, and the Sedalia City Council members meet to discuss important matters that affect us all in this community, we are grateful for your dedication and service. We ask your blessing and protection for all of our first responders, police, fire, sheriff, ambulance, hospital staff, and especially this evening, the EMTs who've had a most heart-wrenching week in dealing with the death of a little girl. We're fortunate indeed that they can persevere in many conditions that are so sad. God bless the United States of America, our great constitutional republic, remembering that so many have fought and died in its creation and preservation for all nearly 250 years. We have honored the veterans this past week who survived and whose service cannot be adequately thanked. And now, as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones. Keep us from harm until we meet again. All this, you pray in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Jason, roll call, please.
Lehman.
Here.
Oldham.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Richardson.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Bliss.
Here.
We need a motion for the approval of the previous council meeting's minutes.
Go move.
All papers.
I oppose.
And the same with the minutes from the planning and zoning and the traffic advisory.
Go move.
Second.
All papers.
I oppose.
Finance administration, Steve Bliss.
Presentations tonight. You kicked off with Oates and Tracy.
Hello.
Hi, Tracy.
It's nice to see you all again. And I was so glad when I carried my mask in here. I didn't have to put it on. Appreciate it. So, for those of you that are new, I start out with a little bit of history about Oates. Oates Transit is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation. We opened for business in 1971. Because of the extensive need for transportation in our state, the organization grew exponentially. By 1973, it was in 80 counties, and today we serve 87 counties in the state of Missouri. Our Midwest region serves Bates, Benton, Carroll, Cedar, Sheraton, Johnson, Henry Hickory, Lafayette, St. Clair, Celine, Pettis, and Vernon Counties. The largest municipality that we serve is the city of Sedalia in this region. Oates Transit offers a shared ride demand response door-to-door service in addition to a deviated fixed route such as the city bus in Sedalia that runs on a route all day long. Many of our routes connect to other transportation services such as Amtrak, airports, and intercity bus services. Services range from taking toddlers to preschool, taking schoolchildren to the pool during the summer, getting people to work every day, and taking people to life-saving medical appointments. We also take people shopping so that they can continue to live independently in their homes. Rides in the Midwest region in fiscal year 2021, which ended on June 30th, totaled 351,805. Of those, 131,819 originated in Pettis County, most of those in the city of Sedalia. We are slowly getting back to our pre-COVID levels, and we are currently at about 75% of where we were with transportation before COVID hit. As a community partner, we provide the Pettis County Community Partnership punch cards that they can hand out to their clients for free city bus rides every month. We also, as soon as COVID vaccines became available, started offering free rides to anyone who wanted to go get vaccinated. To date, we have provided approximately 290 rides under that policy, and we continue to do so. Anyone who calls us in this region can get a free ride to the clinic of their choice. We have challenges in the upcoming year. I was so glad when I did the challenges and blessings. Blessings were more than the challenges. We, of course, have ongoing costs associated with COVID and sanitizing the vehicle and providing PPE to our staff. Who knew we would spend this amount of money on face masks and gloves and sanitizing spray? We have mandates from the federal government that may or may not affect our ability to provide transportation. If they require all staff members to be vaccinated, that's a bridge that we'll have to cross when we get there. Approximately 75% of my staff is fully vaccinated though at this point. Capacity, capacity, capacity. As more people have come back out into the community, it has stretched us to the limits. We, like everyone else, have a lot of our older drivers retire when COVID hit, and we, like everybody else, are trying to hire. And it's a tough job market out there. We've got a lot of turnover. Even people that we hire today may get a better offer in two weeks, and we're back to square one. And it's been a really challenging year for that. We are also having issues with capacity for our buses. The last new buses that we got were 2019 model year. And then COVID hit, and everybody went home, and nobody was working. And then we had the chip shortage that we were facing. And so, I'm happy to report that I finally have eight buses on order, and if I could get another 40, we would be back to where we needed to be. It's going to be a long road to get back to where we need to be. And of course, that increases our maintenance costs because we're keeping vehicles on the road that should have already been sold. Customer satisfaction. I have to stress to everybody, we are under a mandate to wear a face mask on the bus. This is a federal mandate that was given to us by the Transportation Safety Administration. This is not an Oates rule, but it is something that we have to follow. So, please be kind to your drivers. They didn't make the rule. They just have to enforce it on the buses. Blessings. As our COVID transmission rates have decreased, many of our clients have been able to resume their normal daily activities, and that has gotten us back up to 75% of where we were at pre-COVID levels. We're just happy to see our people back out and about. Job creation. While we're struggling to find drivers, it's a great selling point for the city that if you come here, there are jobs available because we are hiring every day. I could hire five more drivers in the city of Sedalia. So, if you know somebody that you think would be a good fit for Oates, somebody that's good with the people, send them my way.
What's the licensing requirement?
Our minimum licensing requirement is a Class E, which is the old chauffeur's license. We love to see people that come in with a CDL license with a passenger endorsement, but a minimum Class E will do just fine. As noted earlier, we have our first eight buses on order. That's exciting news for the new year. We hope to see them in the new year, within the next 12 months. But as noted with the chip shortage, we're in line with everybody else. Something that we're really excited about, we did a software upgrade about three years ago, and we just rolled out the new app that you can get on your smartphone. And we are urging people to go ahead and get signed up for it. It's called Where's My Ride? And you can go on the app if you have a trip scheduled, and you can see where your bus is and approximate pickup time. So, I urge everybody, if they would like to get signed up for the app, to call us at the office, and we'll get you set up. Lastly, in our blessings, we're just happy to be here. It has been a rough 18 months. We're just happy to be here doing what we do best. As always, I want to thank the mayor, the city council, the city staff for everything that they do, all of your ongoing support for Oates and our shared mission for transportation in the city. And thank you for having me here tonight.
You're going to have to change your name.
To what?
Well, this is old, results, trastation system.
No.
Huh?
No.
Don't say that.
It hasn't been that, and I don't say that name out loud. It hasn't been that since 1981, when we got money for public transportation. It was shortened to Oates. And then we changed it a few years ago to Oates Transit to try to stress that we're a transit agency, that we don't make breakfast cereal. You laugh, but we do get those phone calls occasionally. Well, thank you. Thank you for having me again.
Thank you.
I've still got the call, and the next order of business is financial update from Dawn.
What's Kelvin's?
It's always good news when Donald's here.
Yeah, Kelvin.
Okay, so, sales tax up again, 8.3% for the month of November from the prior year. If you take out consideration of the park 1/8 cent increase, it would actually be at 2.9% for the year. Use tax up 30.7% for the month of November based on comparison to last year. Without the 8 cent sales taxes, up 24.1%. Franchise and cigarette taxes appear to be down, but that is based on the timing of the cable franchise tax payment that actually came in on November 1st. So, otherwise, it's right in line with the prior year. Transportation tax is down for the month 3.2%. Property tax collections are up 4.1% from the prior year. Year-to-date, up on sales tax 13.6%. Without the park sales tax increase, it's 7.9% still above prior year. So, good numbers. And use tax up 9.2%. Without consideration of park, it's up 3.8%. Again, with the franchise and cigarette taxes, the cable franchise tax is impacting that number. Transportation tax is up 12.6% looking at this year compared to last. And property taxes are up 7.1%. Collections are up 7.5% for the year. So. Any questions?
I have a question, Dawn.
Okay.
Have we gotten any of our deposits yet?
Yes, we have received the first half. Came in in September. It was roughly 2.1 million, I believe. You're welcome.
One second. With done presentations, we have a personnel policy manual amendment. A new law passed in Missouri became effective in August requiring certain benefits to be given to employees that are victims of domestic violence. Shannon, Randy, Cole, Human Resources as Directors, have viewed these requirements with our city attorney and has pulled together a proposed amendment to our personnel policies to ensure that we comply with this new law. In addition, on legal advice, we propose the modifications to the disciplinary process of removal of a requirement for a hearing for termination. Any questions, council?
Jason, will you read the orders, please?
Bill number 2021-162. An ordinance amending the Personnel Regulations Manual of the City of Sedalia, Missouri by removing section 8.3 disciplinary hearing and appendix B city ward map and adding section 6.3b victims of domestic and sexual violence policy.
Second, please. Second. All papers?
I oppose.
Bill number 2021-162. An ordinance amending the Personnel Regulations Manual of the City of Sedalia, Missouri by removing section 8.3 disciplinary hearing and appendix B city ward map and adding section 6.3b victims of domestic and sexual violence policy.
Final passage.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Bogus.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Dawson.
Yes.
All in favor. My fourth and final thing, Mayor, is the ordinance, bid on the audit services. Prudent business practice includes bidding out audit services every few years. It's typical in the industry to include a three-year agreement. This levels the field for auditors to bid against the incumbent firm since there's always more work in the first year of the engagement to get familiar with the city and to get the audit systems loaded with beginning balances. A three-year engagement allows them to spread these extra costs in the first year across three years. Additionally, best practices in engaging audit firms gives preferences to change auditors periodically. Auditors and staff can get too accustomed to seeing the same procedures year after year and get complacent, or worse, facilitate an easier path around internal controls. To be clear, we do not have any reason to believe there are any problems of this nature, but still something we should consider. The city last bid out its audit services in 2017. It had two firms bid, Gerting, Corte, and Chitwood, which has performed the audit for the city for several years, was the low bidder and continued to provide these services through fiscal year 2021. That's just completed. Staff prepared an issue to request for proposals, or a fee to solicit bids for the next three years and received four proposals. The lowest bid is from Williams Keepers LLC, a regional firm out of Columbia. This firm has performed specialized audits for the pension plans since the requirements were put in place a few years ago for these funds to have a separate audit. Staff has been pleased with their work on these audits and is comfortable recommending them to conduct the audit, the city as a whole, including the pensions. So, we would entertain a motion.
Go move to accept the bid from Williams Keepers. All papers?
I oppose.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Sheriff, what is your opinion, Bogus? Hold the table.
There's two items for consideration through the Public Safety Committee tonight. One is an ordinance. The other one is a resolution. The first one, as part of the strategic planning process for animal control services, we discussed the need to upgrade the finish on the floors and walls in the dog kennels. The current concrete floor and painted walls then is difficult to maintain in accordance with the standards prescribed by the Department of Agriculture for animal shelters. The paint will not hold up to the dog scratching, which leaves a coarse surface that can hold germs, and it's difficult to disinfect. The inspectors have recommended, what they have seen in other shelters, applying an epoxy coating on the floors and walls where the dogs are housed. The epoxy is a much more durable service that will stand up to the dog scratching while covering the coarse building materials to facilitate a more effective and efficient disinfection. Staff has issued a request for proposals and received one bid from epoxy coating specialists. With the original bid being over the budgeted amount of $50,000, staff worked with the vendor to reduce the amount of area coated to the most critical area where dogs are housed regularly. Staff recommends approval of the agreement for the epoxy coating at the animal shelter for $53,800.
Council questions?
What's the life saying about this? I'm trying to remember what they say. Well, it's got a five-year warranty that it's supposed to last much longer than that, you know, to our contractor. So, we had difficulty with the original form, and it's been a problem. And obviously, this is something we have to deal with.
Any other questions from council?
How much smaller of an area are we looking at now?
Smaller?
Yeah, I said that you were.
So, we look at the size of the area.
Yes.
Basically, it's where, it's throughout all of the dog kennels, the dog kennels. So, it's really covering all of the dog areas. Originally, the original bid included the lobby, the cat area, and all that, which would be nice, but it's certainly not that much. So, if this scenario is that, they just attack that area daily, and what truly does the district, it seems to be pretty harsh on that. This was their major thing they wanted to do, but he processed that. What can we do about this, council? Yeah, this was in the budget. That was part of the strategic plan and the budget process. The budget was, we approved the budget of $50,000, a little over the budget, and reduced it to $40,000.
Jason, read your orders, please.
Bill number 2021-163. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for wall and floor resurfacing of Sedalia Animal Shelter.
Second, please.
Second.
All papers?
Oppose.
Bill number 2021-163. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for wall and floor resurfacing of Sedalia Animal Shelter.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Richardson.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Dawson.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
All in favor.
Our second item is a grant acceptance. This is the Sedalia Police Department participates in a counterterrorism program with the Missouri Office of Homeland Security. Through this program, local officers are trained and equipped in the highly specialized areas of terrorism prevention, response, and mitigation. Through this program, we have been awarded a grant to purchase a thermal imaging monocular.
Don't ask me. I can't say these.
Okay, for $4,999. Staff recommends acceptance of this grant to purchase this equipment to assist in keeping us all safe.
So, anybody want to know an example of using that? Any other questions? Read the resolution, please, Jason.
Resolution 1942. The resolution of the City Council of the City of Sedalia, Missouri, authorizing the acceptance of a grant by the Sedalia Police Department from the Missouri Department of Public Safety and Homeland Security for a thermal imaging monocular.
Most should be approved.
Second.
All papers?
I oppose.
Thank you, Tina. All the works, I'm with Oldham.
All right, we have four items tonight. The first one is continuing on with our strategic planning presentation. Derek Dotson, our airport director, will give us his presentation. Derek, whenever you're ready.
Everyone hear that, okay? All right. Little bit about the airports. Handle 8,000 to 11,000 operations a year, 22 to 30 operations a day on average, and that kind of, not necessarily every day we'll have that, but some days might have 50, some days might have five, but they average it out over the time. We have two runways. The major runway, 5,500 feet by 100. We have a crosswind runway, 3,500 feet. It's a pretty important runway. Last week proved its importance. The wind coming from an odd angle allows the smaller planes at least to continue to fly into our airport. We have 17 hangars total. 13 of those are T-hangers. Four of those are box hangars. 20 total-based aircraft now, two twin-engine, 17 single engines, and one jet now that we have based at the airport. There's four additional box hangars. Those are privately owned, and they're under land leases with the city. Two of those we've converted here over the last year. They were on a 30-year, $30 lease. We now have those in line with what we need to, and they're on a $500 a year lease and subject to go up every five years with inflation, as it takes for our grant to meet our grant requirements. Essentially, we have the airports. A lot of people don't even know it's there sometimes. It provides citizens and local businesses with air transportation. It's very important also to any big corporation that may want to move here and start a business here. All the major businesses here, you know, Nucor, Stanley Black and Decker, places like that, they all utilize that all the time. There's a Regal Electric Motor Company down in Warsaw. They utilize our airport because their jets are big enough. They need our airport to handle that. Private individuals can fly out of there if you have enough money, depending on what you want to fly. We do get occasional calls wanting to know if we have commercial service. We don't, but you're welcome to charter a aircraft, and they'll come pick you up and take you wherever you'd like to go. Again, it's all based off how much money you have. It's also great for small general aviation. We have quite a bit of that. And we have a large egg operations. They do quite a bit, and that's going to actually grow, it seems like, this coming summer over there. Another part of that, important part of the airport is not just necessarily people, transportation. Taking consideration, some of these companies that have factories and they build things, when their machines break down, they need to park quick to get that line back up and running. You know, that saves them an incredible amount of time, having the ability to fly that part in instead of waiting for shipping. The economic impact study, that was the most recent one in 2012. That gives you the site, if you want to go look at it yourself. 3.6 million is what they estimate the kind of impact it has in the area. I'm sure that's grown, obviously, over time. Some of the things that come into our airport, there's a recent one, that's actually a 37-passenger jet that was converted to private business. That one's being used for private business. But that, things like that come in pretty regularly, as does this. It's a 7X. It's a cross-the-pond plane. You can take off from Sedalia and fly to Europe nonstop and that. And here are your average airplanes. This is what we see the most in size. But as you can tell, there's a pretty big difference between that, that, and then your average ones. So, as a city-owned provider, we make certain everybody gets what they need. We take care of every flight, start to finish. Handling their rental cars, we help them out. Obviously, Enterprise is, and another local business, provides the cars, but we work with the customer to get that taken care of and get them out to the airport for their use. Fuel is a big, important thing. It's another thing we have that some of the other airports don't. We get a lot of traffic from Marshall, actually, due to we have fuel that we pump, and you don't have to pump it yourself. Most of the people flying those big jets you saw did not want to pump smelly fuel. We also, being self-owned, can be more competitive than a privately-owned service provider. Maintenance needs, that's a new thing, and they use our terminal building, which is also new, and that was in the, that was in our photo. That was a recent purchase. We took over the 1st of January, and that provides us with a place to house all these planes if they need it overnight, which is a pretty common occurrence this time of year. I'm going to skip that a second. What have we done to improve our operations? Well, we took possession of that hangar and began maintenance in March with our first customers with maintenance. The new hangar also brought two business aircraft to our field that are housed there. One's a jet aircraft, and the other one is a large twin piston aircraft. And they both are flown regularly. And you'll see at the end of this slide on some numbers, that's one of the reasons the fuel sales are up. When you have those types of airplanes based at your airport, you're going to sell them fuel. Like I said before, our new hangar gives us overnight abilities, and you'll see what that. Like, as I said before, our new hangar gives us overnight, uh, abilities, and you'll see what that's done here shortly too. Uh, ground power unit, we've used that several times now that we have it. It came with the building. Uh, larger aircraft like to use that to get started, especially in the, uh, winter. It's easier on their batteries and, uh, batteries for jets are very expensive. Five thousand gallon fuel truck, that's proved, uh, beneficial. Uh, that was Eric got that started. We took possession of it last year. We put it in service in August. Uh, I believe it was January, I had eleven Apache helicopters come in and we fueled right at twenty-nine, almost three thousand gallons. So without that truck, we could have gotten the job done. It would have taken much longer because you'd have to stop, go get more fuel, and come back, but, uh, it's also a major question people ask when they're flying those big jets is if you do, do you have the ability to, uh, to take care of us? And that we do. And the contract, uh, we took possession of a UTV. That's helped us out around the, uh, airport, keeping the snow out for our tenants who are regular customers. They can get in, get out, and use their aircraft as needed. Contract fuel, that's just another option that gives, uh, those folks that fly on regularly, uh, a discount on their fuel. Doesn't necessarily hurt us because we don't have to pay fees on credit cards. It's a free service. So if they use contract fuel, they get a discount, but we're not paying any associated fees as we do with the normal fuel, so. Again, another picture of our building, because I'm pretty proud of it. Uh, that's our building, uh, mid-spring, pretty full. Uh, and this is our building last week. That's half of it and the other half. So as you can see, it's full, and that's the way we like to keep it, uh. Moving on to our goals and our, our major plan, it really hasn't changed a lot from last year. It, well, it has and it hasn't. Uh, on the left, provide safe and, uh, efficient service to our customers, that's what we do. Uh, one of the slides in there was of comments, uh, people leave those comments. Service more aircraft traffic, that traffic, you know, people have a choice. They, they look it up, and unlike cars, you can't call someplace and get a fuel price, but in aviation, you look it up on a map and it'll tell you. First thing people look at is what's your fuel cost? Second thing they look at is the comments other people leave and what kind of services you have available at, at, at your destination. Do you have a car? Can I go get lunch? Uh, do you have a nice facility that's relaxing that we can sit in for a little while? All those things make a big difference. That's what they look at. And when you talk to the pilots, gas is first, service is second. And so far, we've done really well, especially with the new place. Uh, we keep our fuel in line with everyone around here, and we have the best facility that you're gonna find in a town that's size. Probably better than you're gonna find in towns three times your size now, so. Uh, if you haven't been out to the airport, I encourage you to come by and, and take a look. Uh, last year, implement full-service FBO, we accomplished that goal. That goal is taken care of. Uh, we took possession of that hangar and that began in March. Uh, the drone program was something that Eric had started before I got here. I looked into it, uh, and to be honest, I've been buried. And I, I, I don't have time for, uh, doing anything necessarily with the drone except, uh, giving up some advice, which I did to the police department. And there are folks over there, Nick Cameron, I think, uh, he, he did a lot of that work for them. I gave him a little bit of information that I knew and sent him on his way, and, uh, he took that and rolled with it, and they've done a fantastic job. They've got their, uh, their program established. I know the city was wanting to do another one. Uh, again, I'll do what I can to help out, uh, but it's, I'm, I'm pretty buried with, uh, with all of these things right now to, to provide any training, because that's how Eric had it set up. But, uh, I do have resources that I can, uh, let people know. Another long-term goal for me, uh, that I like to see is, uh, getting an airplane at the airport for rental purposes and/or perhaps getting a flight club started. We've had, uh, a phone call almost weekly asking about, you know, flight instruction at the airport. So that's one, one of, one of my goals to, uh, to get going. Other than that, we are, there are projects that we're doing. The, the, the last one finished was the ramp in eighteen. We're currently in the phase of construction phase for our new box hangar. That is gonna start next week. They're supposed to start breaking ground to do the, uh, concrete work. In the meantime, that's gonna take up the next few years. Uh, projects after that will be the parallel taxiway and the other runway, getting it into, uh, shape and meeting the requirements it's supposed to. Uh, the way the funding works, it's gonna push it out a while, so after our building is up, we are going to, uh, focus on maintaining the, the, the stuff that we have because it needs attention. And once that's done, then our next is going to be on the, uh, the taxiway and the runway. So this is our difference. I wanted to throw this in here with our building. Again, that was a huge purchase. A lot of people sometimes question things like that. Uh, just depends on who you talk to. Uh, total revenue twenty-one, you can see that is from January one until November eleventh. The other two, twenty-twenty, that's COVID year, that's totaled revenue that I brought in on my, uh, point of sale. There is other revenue that gets charged out through the city on accounts, but I don't have access to all of that. Uh, and this gives a pretty good reference to what we've done. So the two thousand nineteen, uh, two hundred seventeen thousand dollars overall taken in. Two thousand twenty, that's ninety-two thousand. And up until the eleventh last week, we were at three hundred and twenty thousand. I expect that to be three sixty or more by the end of December to make it an even year with the rest of them. Another look at it, how does that, how does that look in what we do? Fuel is the big one. Uh, two hundred fifteen in nineteen, two hundred forty-five this year. Again, a big portion of that, uh, difference in fuel sales is stemming from the based aircraft in which our hangar brought us. Uh, you know, they sit there and they fly weekly and they take a lot of fuel. The oil stays about the same. Uh, the reason it's about the same is there is a shop on the field. I do believe they were buying oil through the city when they were operating, so that's why it's still close to the same. The hangar is the hangar, the new hangar. That, that, that hangar number has nothing to do with the other T-hangers on the field. I do not charge for that. Uh, that's about what has been made off our new hangar, just by storing aircraft. The maintenance, that's what we've made on maintenance. Part of that is also in services. The sixteen thousand three hundred sixteen, the way I had to break it down is simply because, uh, the way our service worked, we changed, I got a different software program, so to make it jive. Services in the prior years include, uh, ramp, any little ramp fee, call-out fee, heat fee, battery charging somebody's battery, things like that. That's why it's really low. It's high on this one because my labor, uh, maintenance is broken down into, uh, annual inspections and then, uh, anything beyond that is a labor charge, so much an hour, like you would pay to get your car or anything else worked on. And that's where that comes from, along with parts. So the maintenance covers inspections, all labor, and parts. So forty-four with sixteen, sixty thousand dollars above and beyond, just in maintenance services only. Now, mind you, that's beginning in March, and that's up through last week. Doesn't even include this month because nothing's on there for this month. Again, that's, that's gonna grow. And it's me and one full-time guy and a part-time guy. So, uh, hopefully, we will be able to get some extra help and, uh, keep that growing, so. Again, that was, uh, that, that's our plan. My, my major goal is to, to keep this, uh, maintenance thing going and growing and, uh, go from there.
Yeah, if I could interject just a little bit, I, I, uh, pulled together, I pulled the financial statement through September to, to, uh, add on to what Derek was saying there. When I went back and looked at our plans that we, uh, put together and what we presented when we were talking about purchasing the hangar and our annual, uh, increase in margin, not just fuel sales, but the actual mark, uh, have taken out the cost of purchasing the fuel. And then the hangar rental and then the margin on the repairs and maintenance, the, the aircraft mechanic team that Derek is doing. We had come up with that, uh, to fund that, we would need a hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred on an annual basis. Through September thirtieth, which was the last financial statement that we've got issued, so that's basically six months of the first fiscal year. We have a favorable variance from the prior year. In other words, we've got eighty-two thousand one sixty-six more net margin, uh, this year than we did last year now. Granted, last year was a COVID year, but, uh, but not really, um, you know, uh, part of that would've been, you know, uh, a regular year, but anyway, it's, uh, eighty-two one sixty-six, which, you know, if you look at that, it's halfway through the year. It's basically eleven point one percent ahead of our, uh, so. Wanted to say where, where we were at, give you an update on that.
Derek, we had a, in the background, as, as fast, we've been talking about, is there grants still floating out there for the extended taxiway? Or just said like, floating somewhere?
Well, yeah, and, and, um, Derek alluded to it there is, um, when we use, we have this, they call it the discretionary allotment that we get on the grant funding. It's like a hundred and fifty thousand a year is what we can use as discretionary. If we choose to use that for what they call income-producing, uh, asset, uh, a hangar that we ran out, then we cannot use this for anything else for three years, right?
Right.
Three or four years, I can't remember. Um, and so since we're doing the hangar, we can apply for a non-discretionary grant for three years. So we've gotta save up our discretionary, uh, that's actually after we finish.
After we finish the building, yeah.
Yeah, so it'll take a year to finish the building, and then we'll have three more years after that before we even apply for the grant for the parallel taxiway.
We also, uh, received another CARES Act grant for, uh, uh, that goes towards operation costs, thirteen, thirteen thousand, so, that we'll be able to use, so.
And we're using that for part of our management.
Uh, no, that was, that was, uh, the first CARES grant, that was thirty thousand. That was all going in towards the building, so that reduces our costs a lot. Uh, the thirteen thousand is only for operation expenses, so, uh, just your day-to-day electricity, things like that is what we use that for, so. Yep.
Any other questions, Derek? I don't see any signs flashing on the top of the road, which flies for fuel, it's a great idea. I see the third one flashing all the time.
Yeah, there you go.
Head of yours.
Yep.
All right, the second item I have tonight, uh, with the construction of the community center, upcoming completion, it's right around the corner. We obviously expect more traffic in that area. So, uh, we would like to make that sure that becomes more smoothly and safer in that area. So we have proposed to extend Autumn Avenue to Main Street. Engineering surveying and services have agreed to grant the city the right of ownership. We need to accept that tonight. After we accept it, the next step in the process is to proceed with the bidding for the construction of that road.
Read your orders, please, Jason?
Bill number two thousand twenty-one, one sixty-four. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a permanent right-of-way conveyance for the extension of Autumn Avenue.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Both?
Bill number two thousand twenty-one, one sixty-four. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a permanent right-of-way conveyance for the extension of Autumn Avenue. Final passage.
Second. Call please. Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
All in favor?
Third item we, I have tonight is, uh, an issue that we deal with annually for generator maintenance. Uh, we put out our bids and the lowest bidder to come in was Martin Energy Group for twenty-two thousand two hundred dollars.
Any questions? Read your orders, please.
Bill number two thousand twenty-one, one sixty-five. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for onsite generator maintenance inspection and repair services.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor?
I.
Both?
Bill number two thousand twenty-one, one sixty-five. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for onsite generator maintenance inspection and repair service.
Final passage.
Second.
Call please. Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
All in favor?
Final item I have tonight is we need to authorize a scope of services to Wilson and Company to design a solution to fix the sidewalks on the block between Osage and Kentucky without damaging the buildings.
Bill number two thousand twenty-one, one sixty-six. An ordinance authorizing a scope of services for engineering services related to sidewalk replacement on Main Street between Osage and Kentucky.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor?
I.
Both?
Bill number two thousand twenty-one, one sixty-six. An ordinance authorizing a scope of services for engineering services related to sidewalk replacement on Main Street between Osage and Kentucky. Final passage.
Call please. Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
All in favor? Thank you.
No, thank you.
Community development. Andrew Doss?
Uh, five, uh, five items on the agenda this evening. The first one is the strategic planning presentation for community development. Uh, Director Simmons and.
Thank you and good evening. Is the temperature okay in here right now?
Freezing.
You're cold again?
I think it's perfect.
So you've heard this spiel year after year. There's some changes in here, though, and, and tonight Devon will be going over, uh, building services, code enforcement, and the building department. But I want to remind you what Community Development Department does, who we are, what we're comprised of, and who we have working for us. So on the development side, there's three employees, myself, Jaleen, and Joe Lee. And we deal focused on neighborhood revitalization, business development, the comprehensive plan, which we just completed, three fifty-three redevelopment plan, downtown development and redevelopment, as well as the planning and zoning issues. We also are in charge of facilities management, seven employees there. And I'll go through each of these departments, uh, in more detail in just a moment. Building Services, which is Devon Lake, our chief building official, celebrating how long now in the job? Almost two years, it seems like a year. Goes by so quick. Um, and there's seven, and there's seven employees in that department, four in code enforcement and two in the building department besides Devon. So we have a total of seventeen employees, and that includes a new position for a part-time facilities maintenance worker slash ambassador focused on downtown cleanliness and helping out with the downtown area. So, as you know, we completed the city's comprehensive plan back in August this year, uh, and we remain focused on that plan. We want to keep that an active and vital plan, day-to-day, year-to-year, uh, in the near future, so that we achieve those goals. Uh, we're also focused on branding. As you know, that's community-wide, it's an ongoing process. Uh, recently, we'll have seen. Recently, we'll have seen the addition of the new banners across the downtown gateway, the branding banner program along the streetlights in downtown. We're working on the website redevelopment. There's so many components to the branding effort that we see every week, it seems like we're adding a new piece to that puzzle, so keep an eye on that. We're also focused on downtown redevelopment and management of the central business and cultural district. We serve as the economic development liaison, helping Jessica Craig with her industrial development and commercial development. We focus on retail recruitment, try to get the right players at the table for the right retail in the right place, and tonight you'll hear a presentation following mine from Retail Strategies, which is here tonight, to talk about a new strategy and an effort in retail recruitment, more focused. We also deal with neighborhood revitalization and the housing initiatives. We constantly talk about the three fifty-three redevelopment plan. You're going to be seeing that activated this year. We're making more progress, the board is meeting and getting work done. And then we deal with the incentive programs that you direct us to work with, with different companies or corporations as they come to town. Also in that category, and it's under the facility maintenance, it's facility planning, design and construction RFPs. So if a department needs a new building, typically it comes to my department to review and build the request for proposals and the specifications that need to go out on that. We also regularly deal with planning and zoning, zoning, rezoning requests, as well as special use permits, which you'll see coming up soon tonight. And then we also do the nonprofit grant management. Typically, that, those are year-long projects. Right now, we're working on the CDBG grant for the State Fair Community College, Olin Howard Innovation Center. What that amounts to is I need to, on something like that, review their invoices, send them to finance, finance sends them to the state, the money comes back, we get it back to the college. Or in some grants, we have to review the prevailing wage payroll reports and make sure they're compliant with minimum wages that they should be paying workers according to the state. So in Sedalia 2020, we want to remind you that from a municipal perspective, it's important for the city to work closely with economic development. We need to create jobs, stimulate the economy, increase our tax base so we can provide services to our citizens, and maintain and improve the city's appearance, which is vital to recruitment efforts, as well as bonding issuances, bond issuances, and our credit ratings. And we added this this year, and you'll hear why when we talk to Retail Strategies, also rooftops follow jobs and retail follows the rooftops. So think about that. The rooftops follow jobs, so if we create jobs, we're going to create the need for housing, and retail wants to locate where those rooftops are. So it's all a synergistic ballet, for lack of a better word, and that's, I don't mean to say it that way, but I did. So it's, and I should say Sedalia 2022, but economic variety, we need to keep a wide range of businesses and industries to make it more attractive to our residents and our prospects. If we keep all of our eggs in one basket, we're going to get in trouble. All of our eggs in one basket, we're going to get in trouble. So we want to have that diversity of our businesses so that we're protected when something turns south, and it's not going to hurt our community like a major would. I should have changed that one, too. A community is attractive to economic development prospects when it can provide high-quality infrastructure, not only in water, sewer, and solid waste, but we need to keep transportation options, streets need to be maintained, the electric grid, natural grid gas. We need to provide professional firefighting. Those companies need to be able to rely on a professional firefighting, as well as a police force, to provide professional services that affect their insurance ratings when they go out for insurance for their business. We also need to provide high-quality schools, neighborhoods, which we're working on, and of course, a healthy living environment. In order to cancel, or to answer the call of more jobs, the city must be able to house their workers, whether those are frontline, middle management, upper management, or owners. When we talk about the housing initiatives, we really drill down into the three fifty-three redevelopment corporation and those neighborhood tools that that grants us access to, which are community improvement districts, preservation tax credits, building neighborhood associations. Currently, and you'll see this tonight, we're proposing tax abatement guidelines and processes. We have identified the first properties for three fifty-three activation, historic districts, we completed the reconnaissance level survey for Victorian Towers, and we're currently waiting to hear whether we receive the grant for turning the Victorian Towers Connaissance Survey into a historic district nomination for the National Register. That will integrate with the three fifty-three initiatives to layer incentive upon incentive that we can go out to our residents and say, hey, we have the tools that can help turn your neighborhood around and fix your house up. We also provide lien clearance. Good part of the job lately has been going through those properties that we purchase at the tax sale, at the annual sheriff's sale. When we take one of those properties, it typically takes about three years from the issuance of the certificate of purchase to turn it into a collector's deed, and then to achieve clear titles so that when somebody builds on it, they can get the loan to build the property back up. We also do property management, that's the title work and the sales of the properties that you've seen us do lately. And then we really want to focus with the three fifty-three and these different incentive programs, and Exsociable Springs has been kind of our role model for the three fifty-three program. But just keep in mind that we need to monitor and anticipate additional staffing needs should that, those programs really kick into gear. When they do kick into gear, it's a lot of paperwork, it's a lot of time spent on those So the comprehensive plan was completed in August of 2021. And again, I want to stress, we want to maintain our focus on that comprehensive plan, particularly on the development scenarios. As you saw in that plan, we were talking about the Katy Depot area, the Sixteenth Street and Ohio area, the Sixteenth Street corridor, the residential pieces in north, as well as the southwest quadrants of the city. What I recommend in that is to keep our eyes on the prize, is to do an annual review of the implementation matrix, and we should do that with the Planning and Zoning Commission. We should follow that up with you all as city council, and we need to keep our departments aware what is assigned to them in the comprehensive plan and monitor that progress also. In community development, we stress that we want to be developer-friendly, easy to get your project moving. We use that one-stop approach to approve construction permits. Devin will talk about those construction projects in more depth in a moment, but the Development Review Committee is designed to bring all the players together at the table that need to weigh in and provide information back to that developer on what they're going to require in the process, and review their plans and tell them what needs to be adjusted. Under retail recruitment, we need to coordinate incoming prospects, and when we say coordinate that, it's when Jessica gets a lead, she sends it over to me, when the chamber gets a lead, she sends it over to me. Joe Lee and I work on those also, to look, does it fit downtown, where's the best fit for that, the right business in the right place. You'll hear about the Retail Strategies proposal in just a moment. And then we also, again, reinforce that we're that industrial, industry, industry liaison with Jessica to help her coordinate prospects. So when we say developer-friendly, our mission is to facilitate the ease of opening and sustaining business in Sedalia. We want that process to be efficient, fast, and practical for the developer. We want to assess barriers and overcome those through collaborative assessment, that's the Development Review Committee. And that includes the city, which is Public Works, Community Development Administration, finance when necessary, we pull in the right players for these reviews when we need to, and the infrastructure providers. We've really built a good relationship with Evergy over the years, with Empire Gas, with our cable providers, with AT&amp;T, and they know to come to our meetings to find out what's going on in the city. Those meet biweekly, every two weeks, and the hallmark of the DRC is communication. So focusing on downtown for a moment, streetscape, we're completed on Ohio, but we still have pieces that we want to link the depots with pedestrian traffic, and we want to remain focused on cleanliness, sidewalks, activation of the alleys, and if you'll remember, in the comprehensive plan, it had a really cool page about how to turn your alleys into something special in your downtown, like pedestrian friendly, as well as business friendly, instead of just an alley that a vehicle's going down, how do we best utilize that space? And then, of course, our downtown parking lots, which you're going to be seeing some major changes this week. Third and Lameen, Public Works is completing that project. Second and Osage, they found room in the budget this year to pave the parking lot catty-corner from us tonight. Christmas lighting was expanded for 2021. You will see tonight that they have completed the lighting of the downtown. There might be one or two timers that they've got to fix yet, but everything should be lit up. We expanded down the side streets along the links of those buildings so that you have more gateways into downtown, as well as when you're coming in from the north, there's more lighting on that north side of downtown also. Joe Lee's currently working with Missouri Main Street on a PEP grant, we're in year one of two years, and that's going to be focused on building downtown, the downtown program back up. What I like about that program is it provides us quarterly statistic reporting, which she has to send to Missouri Main Street to be part of the grant, as well as in good standing with that organization. But I think those are going to be good numbers for you to hear as council every quarter. How many new businesses were opened in downtown? How much was invested in real estate downtown during the quarter? How much renovation occurred? What did we do with the public works side of things? Did we do two hundred more feet of sidewalk? So you're going to get more data to understand what that downtown process is about. We are currently, now that some reporting was finished this week and tonight, we're going to be working on a CDBG grant for downtown economic development, focused on how do we take those city-owned properties, make sure they're weatherproof and sound and ready for a developer, as well as expand that program, figure out how do we, how do we get it to reach out to our business owners, our property owners, and get new business into downtown. The facade program is ongoing, utilizing the CBCD funds, and back to that alley activation. We really want to look at how do we make those alleys workable and provide amenities, eventually tying the electric grid into them, and making it more pedestrian-friendly. With Joe Lee on board, we've continued our special events that you've seen over the past couple of years, and those are typically our nonprofit events, St. Patrick's Day, Fourth of July, the Halloween, which we just experienced, and Veterans Day Parade from this past weekend. We're moving into the Thanksgiving lighting ceremony on Thanksgiving night, Christmas Parade on December fourth, the Relight for Life just held their event a couple of weeks ago, as well as the Zombie Crawl. So Joe Lee's focused on that, as well as building new events, particularly with the Purnell Pavilion coming online this next year. She's working on a Shop Local program, a Gift Your City program, and, do you want to explain Gift Your City, or are we good with just that? But it's a program, you have a second? I didn't mean to call her up here, but I think Gift Your City is kind of an interesting program that she's working on.
Gift Your City contains basically forty-five different businesses throughout the Sedalia community that help to develop price packages. We were able to come up with fourteen different price packages, and so the ones that, businesses that have come on with the Sedalia Shop Local have the buckets to wear when people go in and spend fifty dollars each time, they'll be able to put their names in for these raffles. The promotion goes from November thirteenth to December the eleventh, and so we'll make sure that we have those raffle prizes drawn, just that next week, so they'll be able to give them either as Christmas presents or gifts to themselves.
Can you tell them why it's called Gift Your City?
Gift Your City is because we deliberately made it to where, first, they're already in a shop local store, so they're already shopping in our community businesses. The prize packages are based on experiences coming back into town, whether you're a resident getting to be a tourist in your own city, or if you do give it as a gift to somebody that maybe comes back into town. So some of the prizes are like, meet me at the fair, art lovers, music lovers, that special day, and then just really like the idea of, first, you're shopping local already, the gift brings you back in, you get to experience more businesses inside the businesses in Sedalia.
Thanks, I needed that explained to me again, too, because there's a lot to it. She's also working on that Small Business Saturday, which is the Saturday following Thanksgiving, and that's citywide also. Downtown, you've seen the public and private partnerships we've built, Purnell's Pavilion, it should be built and ready for spring. We've been working with the Liberty Center to provide their outdoor pavilion and stage to help them with that, and then the Lamy Building Project, which is kind of ongoing, we want to make sure that we keep focus up there. We provided the new street and sidewalks up in that project, and then they were able to use that for their inauguration block party. We just want to keep focus up there and make sure that works. And then, as you've seen, the Trust Building renovation is ongoing, and that was the result of a public-private partnership through the TIF. Facilities management, what we really focus on are all the city-owned facilities that require maintenance, that's municipal building, Public Works, the animal shelter, wastewater treatment facilities, airport, parking lots, you name it, those guys are out there working on it. I know they were in Cambridge Village a week or two ago dealing with lights that were out that the city owns, so they cover everything from changing the light bulb to building a wall to cleaning something up. That has one supervisor, Doug, two maintenance workers, three building service workers, and one part-time ambassador, that I think he's been a big hit downtown. Willsey is a good addition to our team. We're pleased with what he's accomplishing. Projects that'll need attention this year is working with Oats on the Amtrak Depot, they have a small list of deferred maintenance items that we need to tackle. The animal shelter has some improvements that we, they have improvements every year, but we'll work on some more this year. Public Works, the wash bay door needs to be replaced, that's a large ticket item, and the sanitation building needs siding replaced. And then, of course, across the parking lot, we need to address the south annex back wall, which has a brick veneer that is failing. We think we can just bring it back. We can either repair that or take the building back to the old concrete wall that it was and just paint it, so we're going to look at the best option and let you know what that is. With that, Devin, it's your turn. Devin's going to go over code enforcement and the building department.
So the businesses that are down here, the cities should put more light in the alleys, have you seen a plan?
That's part of that alley activation, it's how do we make those alleys more pedestrian-friendly and safe, as well as utilize the space, so it's definitely part of the comprehensive plan and what our focus needs to be.
So I'm going to start off with code enforcement. Currently, we're still using the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code and the International Residential Code. In that department, I have three compliance officers and one supervisor. We have approximately eight thousand residential properties, fifteen hundred vacant properties, and eleven hundred commercial properties through code enforcement, and we basically use two routes of compliance. If it's a dangerous building, it goes to court of appeals. Any other non-compliant properties go to municipal court. The recent improvements that we have made in code enforcement, as we continue to do proactive enforcement, we don't wait for complaints. When we see it, we write it. We are actively escalating non-compliant properties to court, and I'll have an entire slide just on municipal court data for this year. We lowered our timeframes to ten-day notices. We have passed a vacant properties ordinance, and we reduced certified mail to dangerous buildings only. We found out that you're not required to send certified mail for any other violation other than dangerous buildings, so that can be a huge. other than dangerous buildings, so that can be a huge money-saving on postage. So my goals for next year, I need to improve efficiency. Back between January and May, I hired three brand-new code enforcement officers. So they have been learning a whole new job, and that's very difficult. So as they become more comfortable in their jobs, they're going to improve their efficiency. We're going to still continue to go after the habitual and chronic offenders. We're still working for incentivized training. We want to get out and speak to some other code departments. We did visit Harrisonville this year, but I'd like to go visit some others as well. We continue collaboration with PD and FIRE. We really have a great relationship with them. They call us whenever they have a scene that they think we need to be there, no matter what the time or the day, so that we can get some compliance on those properties that we may not have access to at any other time. We continue to collaborate with Public Works for the demolitions. The demolitions have gone up a lot this year in number, so that takes a lot of collaboration with Brenda. We want to start the e-ticketing process. Right now, we're still handwriting citations. It's very time-consuming, and so starting the e-ticketing process with the same software that PD uses will help us be able to generate those much quickly, much more quickly. And we are getting ready to implement administrative search warrant ordinance, and I would like to increase the collection rate for the mowing, the trash evacuations, and the demolitions this year. The two big ticket items that I'm going to be requesting, possibly two trucks, that was approved in this year's budget, but I have not received them yet, so that possibly may need to be rolled over into next year. And then the e-ticketing equipment, hopefully I will know soon how much that will cost. I don't think we're going to go with the handheld units like what PD has. We're going to try to either use an iPad software or a desktop software, because we don't need the, we don't walk around handing out tickets out of a machine. We mail ours. So here's some statistics for last year compared to this year. If you'll notice, our violations are down, and that's really for three reasons. Number one, we started prosecuting people in court, writing citations, attending court twice a month. Now we're up to three times a month. Number two, they're all brand-new. They're still learning their jobs. And number three, we did cut the timeframe down to 10 days, which makes their inspections come around much quicker than they used to. We did increase our dangerous buildings. We only had 20 last year. We've, we're up to 33 this year. We've spent a little less in postage, which hopefully that will go down significantly next year. We've only been not sending certified for about two months now. So hopefully next year, we'll see a huge cost savings in postage because of that. So for municipal court, we started issuing our own summons and citations in March. The first court date was the first court in April. So far, we've written 209 properties, and that's 407 citations written by hand. Of those 209, 13 were dismissed. This could be because they were deceased and we didn't know it. We accidentally wrote the wrong owner. There was no identifier information, or we ended up picking it through Board of Appeals because it was a dangerous building. 43 have been corrected. 50 of them have pled guilty, but the violation still exists. 20 have failed to appear. 22 have been continued to a future court date. 24 have been refiled. They were old cases that they pled guilty, and it was not corrected, so it will go before the judge again. And there are 37 new cases to go before the judge over the next three court dates left this year. We also worked with finance. They had some delinquent business licenses. We started out with 68. That is both retail and occupational licenses, and we have whittled that down to 14. And so far, we've collected $19,223 in fines in municipal courts. For the building department, I have two building inspectors, and then I share Jolene with John. She writes all of our permits. We are still using the 2015 international codes and the 2014 electric code. We issue building permits, electric permits, mechanical plumbing, sign permits, special use permits, rezoning applications, and home occupation registrations. And then for code variances, we go to Board of Adjustments, and then planning and zoning for zoning. Our goals this year are to continue the incentivized training to visit other building departments. I did go to Columbia. That was the one that I did this year. I want to do informational handouts for common things that we see in the building department, like how to add a deck to your house, or the requirements for roofs. Just a simple little handout to help people understand those things. We're currently working with CommCate to move our building permits over to CommCate to be issued instead of Springbrook. Continue collaboration with Public Works, FIRE, and the Pettis County Health. We've done a much better job when we do final inspections for either a new building or for a new business. We all go together. So we, I schedule those, and everyone goes at one time, which is more convenient for the business owner or the homeowner, and we all can support each other. And then one that I wanted to get done this year, but it's not going to get done, is to adopt the 2021 ICC codes. Those books have not been released yet, so I've not been able to purchase them, and we can't go through the code book until we can purchase it to adopt it. So hopefully, they told me by the fall they'd have them done, but I have not seen that yet. So I'm hoping next year, we can get that accomplished. And those code books are fairly expensive, so that will be my big ticket item this year for a budget request. Here's just a list of some of the major construction projects that have been completed And then these are the ones that are currently under construction, or I have plans turned in for them to be approved. And then here is an idea of the last two years compared to this year on number of permits issued. We're down in number of permits, but we're up in permit fees, and we're, I think, high in valuation for the amount of permits that have been issued. Our inspections are up, and we've issued a lot of certificates of occupancy. If you remember, last year, we started issuing certificates of occupancy for anybody that wants to obtain a business license. Even if it's an existing business and they relocate, they have to get a certificate of occupancy. So it's not just for new businesses, it's for existing as well. And here's just a graph comparing the last 20 years of building valuation. So the two that stand out are 2008, that's when the high school was built, and 2010 was when Pembon Winchester, as well as Pro Energy built during those years. And then I highlighted 2018. I deducted New Core out of there, because if I had put it in there, they were at 218 million. That would have thrown the graph way off, so I take it out. Any questions?
The next item on our agenda is a presentation by Retail Strategies. We have business developer John Tivett and Vice President of Business Development, Sarah Beth Norton here, to explain what kind of value retail recruitment strategy you can add to our organization.
Awesome. Thank you so much for having us here today. I'm John, this is Sarah Beth, and we're from Retail Strategies. And get right in here. So Retail Strategies exists to connect small, usually small, medium-sized communities with retailers, and recruit retail to those locations, you know, such as Sedalia. So we maintain, this is not an exhaustive list, but we maintain relationships with hundreds and hundreds of retailers across America, and we recruit them back to cities by doing a lot of different things. So while we serve communities, you know, we talk about the challenges. Obviously, we literally just heard them, that was a great tee-up, I love it. You know, lack of resources, time, you know, there's people wearing, you know, many, many hats, that's extremely common. You know, connections in the town, you know, a little bit isolated from major cities like this. Experience, you know, new people in the job, losing people to other locations, and things like that. So we want to accomplish a list of goals. You know, we want to increase tax revenue, create jobs, you know, add equality of life. We want to create new businesses in the community. And the process we do goes on three steps. Step one, you know, to discover, actually come to the town, drive the market, look up underutilized buildings, empty buildings, buildings that the city recently repossessed because, you know, they demolished a building, you know, city-owned property. Really anything that seems like it might be out of place, or might be more, you know, well-used for something. Connect, you know, we just mentioned, you said that the hallmark of the community development organization is communication. This is where communication comes in. So our staff will cold-call, you know, a list of those things, right-size for the property we find, whether it be a quick-service restaurant, or a small retailer, a large retailer, a gas station. You know, we're connecting with them, and we're saying, hey, listen, we have a great opportunity for you in Sedalia, Missouri, at this location, they have this, you know, draft time, this median income. We can demonstrate by data that they're lacking in this certain sector of commerce, and, you know, we think it'd be a great place. And advance, you know, so beyond that, you know, we're trying to match them with the property owner. So we're trying to help negotiate to buy the property. We're trying to help negotiate matching the retailer with a developer, with the landowner in some cases, with the city in some cases, if it's tax, you know, tax benefit or whatnot. And trying to bring the deal home, and, you know, trying to open a location here. This is just one aspect of what we do, mobile data collection. You know, a lot of times, if a developer were to look up Sedalia on Wikipedia, they would, or on the city website, they would get a population number. That's not necessarily at all representative of what your buying power as a community is. You can see them, this heat map, you know, the light purple area, that, those are people that are actually traveling from these locations into Sedalia to spend money. We do that from mobile data on your cell phone of, you know, saying you left Walmart and went to Chipotle, or you left Walmart and went to Starbucks. That's, all this data is coming from that, from the Walmart right there. You can see the little red dot. So there's a lot of people coming from Sedalia from a large area to spend money. And so we can estimate, your trade area is more like 72,000 people, which would be like your kind of faux population, as far as how many people would be looking at your area and what to spend. So here's, you know, an example, this is not Sedalia, this is just a hypothetical. You know, limited-service restaurant, we would look up a peer analysis of a city, just like yours, with similar demographics, population, distance from, you know, a major city, things like that, and say, well, normally, say they had 13, where you only have 11. You have an extra full-service restaurant, so maybe we don't focus on that. They have an extra quick-service restaurant, you know, maybe we could focus on that. Trying to just get, you know, collect the most concrete data points as possible to say, hey, listen, you know, this is a city that, you know, worth coming to. Sarah Beth?
A little shorty over here. There we go. And so not only are we going to analyze your major national retail corridors, we're also going to look at the downtown. So really analyzing, what are those opportunities? Looking at the comprehensive plan, and analyzing each part of the five pillars of the downtown mix. It's similar to the Main Street program, but just a little bit step further, as it takes really into account the retail opportunities in the downtown. And of course, looking at the comprehensive plan to identify, you know, those alleyways. What can we do to increase the pedestrian walkway? Looking at tourism, making this a true destination where people come, spend their dollars over a weekend or a week-long adventure. So we'll analyze each of those five pillars to put together a plan. And the way we do that is doing our strategic vision workshops. So we'll send the team to the community, and we walk the downtown, meeting with stakeholders, anybody who's going to have some sort of input from the community. You guys all would be invited, current property owners, what are they willing to do with their property? Because the property component is truthfully, you know, the heart of what you can do within your downtown and with any sort of development. And so we'll meet with these different stakeholders over a day-and-a-half time period, and then put, formulate our strategy. So as I just mentioned, the real estate is truly the driving force. We can sit here and talk about data for hours on end, we can nerd out, but truthfully, what's going to make a commercial real estate deal happen is the real estate. So we were born out of a commercial real estate firm, and we have, pretty much everyone on our staff has some sort of commercial real estate background. They've ever brokered deals, they've been a tenant rep, worked for major developers across the country. So that's the eye that we look through, and the lens we look through. And so we'll send the team to the community, drive the marketplace, looking at every single real estate asset you have, whether it needs to be developed, if it's vacant land, redevelopment opportunities, of course, and then looking at shopping centers that are current there, you know, what businesses are currently there, if they're better or best used for those facilities. Can we move a service provider to the back and fill it with a retailer that needs more front row? And so we're going to really spend a lot of time cataloging every single real estate asset you have. And we're also going to put together a building and business inventory. Sometimes that takes communities a lot of time to really create this information and data, and we have access to this information pretty much at the click of a button. So we'll formulate this inventory list for you to have on hand, so if there is a local entrepreneur that wants to start up a bar or a boutique, whatever it might be, there's this building inventory sheet that you can immediately go to and say, hey, this is a great spot for a boutique or a bar, whatever it might be. So walkability is so, so, so important to any and every community, specifically in the downtown. And so this is actually a true score of 65, which is pretty good. We like to see somewhere in the 80 range for communities of your size. And so things that you can do to really up that score is pedestrian walkways, as well as the service providers that are within a 20-minute walk time, and then just really building up those different services within that 20-minute walk time. So this is where the deliverables come into play. So you're going to get the data and analytics of your communities, looking at that trade area, the peer analysis that John spoke of, as well as so many other reports, just really driving in, diving into the consumer behavior, or your consumers, not just your constituents, willing to spend their dollars on. You're also going to get that real estate analysis, marketing tools, a strategic vision for the downtown and for the community as a whole to grow that retail base. And most importantly, conference advocacy and representation. So we will actually be an extension of your staff. We will connect with the property owners, the brokers, the developers, tenant reps, retailers, anyone who's going to have a seat at the table, we're going to bring them to the table, connecting them with the right person within City Hall, or the right person in our rolodex of connections, and then really showcasing the sites that make the most sense. And then reporting back to you and our point of contact on what is said. So if it's Trader Joe's, for example, and they said, yes, way, we want to be here, here's the spot, great, let's move forward. Well, no way, you're crazy. Well, what is that feedback that we can bring to you? There might be something on the city side that you can change, whether it's an ordinance, looking at buildings that can be redeveloped. And so we really work with our community partners to really push these deals forward. We also mentioned the conference recruitment. So that is, you know, the Super Bowl of what we do is ICSC. And so they have their big show typically in May. In 2019, there was 40,000 attendees. We had 450 meetings over a two-and-a-half-day time period. It's the worst two-and-a-half days of the year, because it is just so much, but a lot of deals get done. Of course, in 2020, they pushed it back, and so this year, they had it, they're going to have it in December. back, and so this year, they had it, they're going to have it in December. So in about two-and-a-half weeks, our whole team is going to December, or excuse me, going to Vegas to represent all of our client communities to the commercial real estate industry. And it, you know, we become your MVP, we become your Patrick Mahomes in representing you at these conferences, to really showcase you as a community and the opportunities that you have. So, turn over to John to do our recap.
So, you know, as a quick recap, you know, we're multiplying your staff, we're becoming an extension of your Economic Development Department. And it's not this kind of thing where you just, you know, sign a contract and we come back to you in a year. I mean, there's constant communication back and forth with access to software, you can see what's going on, you can call and ask us a question. If you want us to pull a data report, we'd be happy to pull it for you. We just become a part of the team, honestly, and committed to bringing retail to Sedalia. An investment, you know, we want to bring, you know, our ultimate goal is to bring tax revenue to the city. You know, we don't work for the retailers, we don't work for developers, we work for the city. We're doing what's best for the city every time. So, you know, it's an investment in your city and trying to, you know, turn your up curve of sales tax just exponentially. We make sure your story is heard. Like she said, we're being, I'll be in Vegas in two weeks, meeting with, you know, countless people trying to recruit, you know, people to the communities just like this, and with the right amount of data, and the right data and the right properties and communication, you know, we can do it. Any questions?
District Council, I have news. The city you represent, Missouri?
Maryville and Mobley right now.
Okay. And then if you could tell us a success story or a city that we could look at?
Sure.
Would be compliment to any of them.
Sure. Here's a success story. Perrigold, Arkansas, it was the exact same size, and it's in Arkansas, it's right, not far from here, a couple hours. 28,000 people, you know, they wanted to increase tax revenue, you know, jobs, recruitment, the same thing we were just talking about. They actually had a funeral home. If you see right there on the left, that was a Google Earth picture of a funeral home, it was in the perfect spot. And so when we, they hired us, we went there and said, what about this funeral home? And they said, well, they'll never sell it, we've tried, they never sell it, never sell it. We wore them out with just persistence and cold-calling and communication, got them to sell it, and which, that happened around last year, they boosted it and redeveloped it into a Starbucks and a Freddy frozen custard. So now, there's two restaurants, you know, they were previously driving to Jonesboro, which is about 25 minutes away, to get Starbucks, there was nothing there. Now they have a Starbucks and a frozen custard, generates tax revenue.
Great. And District Council?
Thank you. Thank you for so much.
Third item we have on the agenda is an ordinance granting special use permit to KGI Wireless. This is for an installation of a monopole at 1807 West Broadway, I believe. And they recommend the approval.
District Council, can you read your orders, please?
Bill number 2021-167. An ordinance granting a special use permit to KGI Wireless on behalf of Verizon Wireless for the installation of a monopole tower located at 1807 West Broadway in the city of Sedalia, Missouri. Second reading.
All in favor?
I propose. Bill number 2021-167. An ordinance granting a special use permit to KGI Wireless on behalf of Verizon Wireless for the installation of a monopole tower located at 1807 West Broadway in the city of Sedalia, Missouri.
Final passage. Roll call, please.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
List?
Yes.
All in favor.
Fourth item we have on the agenda is an ordinance rezoning the property on East 24th, it's right just be to the south of Centennial Park, and taking it from R1 to R3. This has also been through planning and zoning, they recommend approval.
District Council, can you read your orders, please?
Bill number 2021-168. An ordinance granting a change in zoning classification from R1 Single Family Residential to R3 Apartment House on certain properties located on a section parcel on East 24th Street in the city of Sedalia, Missouri, in accordance with Chapter 64 Zoning of City Code of the city of Sedalia, Missouri.
Second reading. All in favor?
I propose.
Bill number 2021-168. An ordinance granting a change in zoning classification from R1 Single Family Residential to R3 Apartment House on certain properties located on a section parcel on East 24th Street in the city of Sedalia, Missouri, in accordance with Chapter 64 Zoning of City Code of the city of Sedalia, Missouri.
Final passage. Second. Roll call, please.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
List?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
All in favor.
The fifth item we have before you is a resolution adopting the 353 Presidential Tax Abatement Guidelines. It's pretty exciting, the deployment of this tool. Administrator Sean has prepared a, oh, a brief presentation regarding this. Administrator Sean, you have the floor.
Great, thank you, sir. We had pulled together some tax abatement guidelines or for the 353, and presented it to the Sedalia Redevelopment Corporation, which is part of that whole process to take a look at that in more detail and then make recommendations to council. So, to kind of go through that PowerPoint and kind of give you, give you all an overview of what we're at or what the recommendation is. The redevelopment plan that was adopted by council by ordinance has, does not focus on the tax abatement. It really focuses more on other tools within 353, but it does allow the tax abatement. We also had the opportunity to visit Excelsior Springs, and really visit with them and see what, how they've demonstrated a lot of success in using that, that part of the tool, particularly when they all relate it with the USDA grants. And when we get towards the end here, I'll have some examples here of how that can work. So what we were proposing is that we copy some of what they are doing, again, not as the primary focus, but as another tool to help us further our goals here. So, in review here, the state statutes are SMO 353, which is where it gets its name, and the Procedures Ordinance in Sedalia, which is Chapter 42 of our code, outlines the process. And in general, you know, you can kind of go down through the tax abatement guidelines that we drafted here, you'll kind of see how this lays out. But it says council may, but it does not, it's not required, so on line may there, grant tax abatement to property acquired by the Sedalia Redevelopment Corporation pursuant to a redevelopment plan. Then also, under that code, the abatement can continue after the disposition, but again, it's only by council adoption by ordinance on each individual plan. The Sedalia Redevelopment Corporation is to review the development plan and recommend to council the impact analysis on the taxing jurisdictions and a hearing before an ordinance is considered by council. The maximum abatement can be 100% of the assessed value for the real estate tax on improvement. The tax on the land continues to pass on through to the taxing jurisdiction. The tax can happen for up to 10 years, and then an additional 50% are for the additional 15 years, you could do 50% of the total assessed valuation on the real estate for that, for the next 15 years. The guidelines drafted to facilitate the process, again, kind of going down through and highlighting the sections here in bullet form. The purpose, the incentive, is to provide an incentive to remove li, to encourage your investment, to encourage historic preservation where it's appropriate, it's to increase home ownership, to change people from tenants or renters to homeowners, and increase the value and appearance of neighborhood, and highlighted in red there that requires all li to be removed and maintained or kept removed, and to enjoy the tax abatement. The program's description includes the Victorian Towers Historic District, they have preservation guidelines for to qualify for a tax abatement within that district. They have to comply with those historic guidelines. The Sedalia Redevelopment Corporation then takes title for at least one day to make that abatement happen. The amount of the abatement is negotiated, the, upon approval of partial, upon approval, a partial abatement can then be passed through for up to 25 years. And again, that requires council approval. To be eligible, the property must be within the midtown residential area or the MRA has adopted in the plan, and that was made in accordance with the Declaration of Li, if you all remember, when we presented that council, we had to meet the definition of li, and you all had to by ordinance declare that area as lied. The exception for disqualified properties is any property that's being used for illegal activities, outstanding code compliance citations, and also if a common owner has citations on other properties. So if you're not complying on one property, you can't get that tax abatement on another property. It's different, both of them into compliance. Also, common ownership, you must clear the li on all properties. So if you have, say, for example, a landlord out there that owns 10 properties, can't come in and do a tax abatement on one property without clearing li on all 10 of those properties. The delinquent cannot be delinquent on property. Minimum project improvement, we set a minimum, and we, again, stole this from Excelsior Springs, that we said that the improvement, the cost of the improvement must be greater than the net present value of the tax abatement, and we almost set in there, discount rate of six and a half percent. So to just go through a quick example there, if you had a current building that was, has a value in accordance with, as set by the assessor of $100,000, then by statute, state statute, that assessed value rate would be 19%. So the assessed value of that property would be $19,000. Also, the land would be separated as, or stated as separate, as they do, and you have that, it was $10,000, so the assessed value would be $1,1,900. And if you were going to do an improvement of $10,000 on this property, the assessed value or the increased assessed value after the improvement should be $1,900. So then, the taxes abated over eight years, it would take eight years to recover that $10,000. And then, the discount rate of six and a half percent in accordance with our tax guidelines. The net present value of that abatement over those eight years would be $7,653. So, the $10,000 being greater than the $7,653 this property or this example would qualify. I also put down there a calculation to show for illustration purposes, the net present value of the impact to the taxing jurisdiction would be a negative $6,260. So, in other words, or another way to say that, if the $10,000 worth of improvement costs the taxpayers $6,260. But then, the thought process or the idea is that it raises the value of the whole neighborhood. So that's what the taxing jurisdiction would have to make up by increasing the value. So it's just showing that it's, you don't have to make up the whole $10,000, you only have to make up the $62,570. Does that make sense?
I apologize for the last one. Just get the call, go through that again.
Okay, so if you increase the value of a neighboring property, you don't have to increase them $10,000 because that's the abatement that you're giving up. You really only have to increase it to $6,259, increase the tax base around it because of the net present value. I guess we're saying increase the property around it, do make that. That's the assumption. And so.
The assessor will say that my abatement's dollars are true to my property, the surrounding property, the results of the drowning, up here, don't you see?
Yes. In, in, in general, that should happen. Because if you remove the li of the area, because it's li, it's one area's li, so it really improves the whole neighborhood. Now, if you just improve one property, no.
Well, yeah, why don't I improve the property, you improve the property, he improves the property. How do, how do we determine what share of that? It's, 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 I really think a little lot of the background, my head around that. If we, because there was, we take a particular block that's li.
Right.
And we start enduring the improvement, one house is mine, or whatever, it's obviously have an impact in the whole area.
I, I'm not understanding that. I'm saying how do we get some assessment?
So that's up to that individual, unless they sort of group the li, we're going to make that difference. It's still just the li, right? Certain group of people are going to make that factor, really. I'm saying, Steve, so this is.
I still agree, but you're saying if one valider doesn't.
It's going to be, yeah, people.
It's going to have to be, I mean, this is in the business of the property, right? They, they get access to the.
Individuals, individuals, certainly, spirituals, or.
I understand, it's, that last statement, I'm still not.
One thing is pretty, if you're through the property, right, you're, I mean, your property, you said, through the property, but it's already been done, and you said.
No, I, I'm not arguing that, you know, I'm just saying, get the dollars now for that improvement. Especially several people in the area make those improvements, and then they get, do get a proportion of tax benefit.
Well, in that, yeah.
I understand what you're questioning. Yeah. The tax abatement only comes from a plan of an individual coming through. So like in this example, the, the person making that improvement of $10,000 for that one house would have to make their plan. And then we would have to approve that or to review that process through the Sedalia Redevelopment Corporation, and then bring it to council to approve that. And that would be the agreement with that individual property company.
Every one of those has a council.
Every one, yes. And it's on a case-by-case basis.
And then I guess the other thing is, we make some type of assessment on an annual basis, about the progress towards that abatement, we don't give the net action without knowing. I think one of the previous slides that sort of said that, we're not going to give them, so the goal is to give, we're not going to give them a tax, the base of residence unless we see progress on an annual basis.
No, you, you do it at the beginning of the project, okay? And you set the amount that you're going to agree to, and a plan or a development agreement, and that'll be a memorandum of understanding that's entered into between the person that's doing it, the owner, and the Sedalia Redevelopment Corporation. And then you'll set that, how much you're going to abate of that tax at that, through that memorandum of understanding. And then, once you set that into place, then council approves it, and if council approves it, then we send the, basically the. And if council approves it, then we send the basically the certificate to the assessor. The assessor then rolls back the assessment. The assessed value on that property is really just zero for the building until we go into public. And then the Sodalia Redevelopment Corporation along with the staff will review. And if they let the light come back, then we can revoke.
Well, the disqualification light kind of made me think that... See, I don't want to... Yeah, yeah. If the light come back or it's never removed, then we'll disqualify. So I think that's...
Yeah.
I have a question else. It was mentioned that it was the Victorian Towers area. But for clarity, are we focusing on one particular area within the city that we're going to do this on? And what area is that?
Well, the whole area is the midtown redevelopment area, which is really encompassed with a large section, like a 4,000 and some property. And so it really is all areas. The only reason the Victorian Towers is mentioned is that going through the process becomes an historic district. And so to be able to comply inside that district, there's going to be added...
Okay, so anybody in the city limits of today, you can apply for that?
No, it's only within the midtown residential area that that plan is... What's the boundary?
Basically, 16th Street North, Park Avenue, east of City Line. About 16.
So we have a second?
Yeah, I'm going up the map right now. It's a genius. It's all this is the corporation is proofing people that are covered by the council. Individuals and students. We're going to identify a particular lighting area where we can show a big challenge and make that improvement. They can only buy it on someone.
Right, that's exactly, that's what I was thinking about. Yeah, that looks like it.
We pretty much identified two areas.
Okay, so that's basically what I'm seeing. As far as the wards are concerned, so and then we're showing this second ward, part of the first, part of the first. Okay.
Part of the fourth. But some more time, we can do another round. There's light across these 1,016 streets.
Right.
And last part, too, if you're not close.
So if you're... If you're not, you're pushing on stations.
Thanks. I'd like to thank you for yourself. Those folks, I'm glad I'm good.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm... Okay, so the improvements is again, must comply with codes, bring all up to code, weather stripping, broken windows replaced, smoke detectors, side walls repaired, retaining walls repaired, landscaping not overgrown, electrical brought up to date and to current safety standards. The eligible improvements are things that affect the health and safety of the occupants, the structural alterations, masonry, including tuck pointing, elimination of lead and asbestos, aesthetic appeal and eliminations of toxic lessons, replacement of plumbing and HVAC, handicap accessibility, roof gutters, downstairs flooring and painting, energy conservation, demolition if necessary, landscaping and stormwater control, historic preservation and conservation of, or conversion of rental to owner occupied.
Do we... Can I just stop you a bit, but do we know elimination of lead and flush lead and plumbing?
Yes.
Yes, does?
Yes.
Okay, good.
So the implementation or the process, we would have a preliminary meeting. At that meeting, we would review pictures, real estate, tax statement and property evaluation. We would identify the project and include drawings for what needs to be done, inspection and review, historic preservation review if applicable. If it's within the Victorian Towers area, then we would have the Sodalia Historic Preservation Group review it. And then the Sodalia Redevelopment Corporation review and develop the memorandum of understanding. And at that time, they would negotiate the fee for a process of application. The impact statements will then be prepared and mailed. There requires that those impact statements to each of the taxing jurisdictions are prepared and then notices given to them of a public hearing that must be held. We would hold then the public hearing. And then after the public hearing, council can consider an ordinance. Then after the, assuming council approves it, then they would go through the permitting process, the memorandum of understanding with the Sodalia Redevelopment Corporation, sets the timeline. And the Sodalia Redevelopment Corporation can grant extensions if necessary. And then would conduct an inspection of the completed project. Assuming all of that happened and happened well, the Sodalia Redevelopment Corporation would recommend approval to council. The property then would be titled to the Sodalia Redevelopment Corporation for at least 24 hours. And that legally gives the council then the opportunity to by ordinance approve the tax abatement for up to 25 years. The certificate of tax abatement then would be issued to the assessor. And then the assessor would basically roll back the... Or the assessment. The reveal and review and appeals process, the Sodalia Redevelopment Corporation and staff would review the completed work in compliance with the memorandum of understanding. Any appeals or any disagreements with the Sodalia Redevelopment Corporation would be brought to city council for their review. And then the decision of city council would be final. Sodalia Redevelopment Corporation would conduct a follow-up inspection and they may repeal the abatement. If they allow the light to come back, then the Sodalia Redevelopment Corporation would make a recommendation to council to repeal it. And by ordinance, you'd say, huh, you lost. Also included would be reference tables and then also application forms included in your, in your package for the, for the tax fixing guideline. To go through a couple of examples of how this can overlap with the USDA. If you went through that example that I used earlier where the building had a value of $100,000, the land had a value of $10,000 and the improvements that they were going to make was $10,000. If you borrowed all of that $10,000 for, at a 1% loan for 10 years from USDA, then your property tax abated per month would equal about $106. And the loan payment would be 87.60 on a 10-year loan. And so the net present value to the owner would be a negative $705. So it'd cost them $705 on a net present value basis to get $10,000 with the improvement. That's a good slide. And then if you use the sample or use another example where they're actually going to overlay a grant with a loan, if this is a low income individual, they can actually qualify for a grant as well as the USDA loan. And so if you're going through this, again, the building value is $100,000, the land value is $10,000, the improvements now are $20,000. And then the USDA grant offsets 7,500 of that. They max out their USDA grant. And then they get a $12,500 loan, which is the balance of the $20,000, for 15 years. Then their property tax abatement per month will be about $116. Their loan payment will be 74.81 per month. And the net present value for the life of the loan would actually be positive for $1,322. So they're getting $20,000 worth of improvement and actually saving $1,322,000. And that's a good slide. Questions, directions? If I mentioned, the Sodalia Redevelopment Corporation did recommend approval. And so we prepared a resolution for council if you all choose to approve.
She has a question. So I think this is great. I kind of want to clarify, you know, I came in about this time. I came in just for this development. And I think it's great. I think those two slides are really significant, something we can develop for our people. But my question is, are we going to have somebody with the city that's helping people utilize this? We have to have because if we don't, I feel like we're going to have all this displaced with it. And we have to, and a lot of people are going to come in and really have to explain and make them understand, hey, in the long term, you're going to have a small net loss of $10,000 or you qualify for a grand annual loan. Hey, you're actually going to be ahead of the game, sales stuff. That's, I think those are really good. But I'm just worried that if we don't promote this, have somebody there really helping people with this, it's going to be...
So David, our goal, Chris Markle is part of this group and Steve Hertzler. So we're going to take a second, maybe one block, and we build it and fly it and make it feel like a network. Sure, it's very... So we're not going to lie to the public, carry it off. Our goal is to be balanced by...
Well, that's fine. We're not going to take an area that we run a counter on and work with them and explain it. So that's...
As far as the staffing on that, Steve, we've talked about that with Director Simmons. And the, right now, we're going to try to get a feel for what kind of workload it would be. And we do know, we do understand that there's going to be a significant increase in workload most likely. And that we, in the long term, will have to bring somebody on at some point. But we have to, have to understand that, get a feel for the workload first and what that's going to be like.
But it's going to be, this is going to be a, making sure I understand, this could be available for the people that are in this area. Even if we pick out a block or do the...
That's correct.
If you're from, what do we say, 15th Street North and Park...
We're going to focus on that because if they look long, we don't have the budget, we don't have the funding. So our funding source, okay, yes.
Well, yeah, there's, there's two pieces that's why, you know, this is just one of the tools within the Sodalia Redevelopment Corporation. Now, the whole block analysis is something else that we're working on too. The tax abatement guidelines were prepared for specifically what you're asking. It gives staff really the guidelines. And so if you all approve these guidelines, then staff can use those guidelines to go out and help people understand how do you go through the process and how can you get this tax abatement. And then we'll bring it back through the Sodalia Redevelopment Corporation. But as Councilman Dawson also mentioned, yeah, it is going to be an increase in staff load and, you know, it's again, one of the tools in the toolbox for when our code officers are out there and they have a problem. Instead of just saying, hey, you got to fix this, here's a tool that helps you get it fixed. You know, so, yeah, it's, you know, it's the carrot and the stick, you know?
Yeah, I know, but I'm just filling it real clear about... So I don't think, who is involved? Is it going to be a block or is it going to pick and choose? Is it going to make it everybody in sight and clear?
Anybody within that area can put together a plan and come and fly.
You know, our budgeting process, we're limited, what we can do this.
Now, we can apply, but as long as we're pretty now, we can always say, hey, we're out, we'll bug this out for a year.
But there are, actually, it's just like the USDA grant. It's funny.
Right, I mean, yeah. That's depending on in town, right? I mean, the USDA...
You just, the loan is not necessarily dependent on the grant.
That's the people we had in here a couple months ago that, my recollection generally, Andrew had in here coming, was that, hey, if people can qualify for this, that typically couldn't qualify the USDA program, which are real folks that may not be able to qualify for loan or loans, but could take advantage of that USDA loan and/or a grant depending upon whatever USDA's guideline is.
Obviously, we have several internal opportunities in the city, in this area. But I think our goal, there's a few goals, that got in areas of light area, let's say the block.
Okay.
Be down by the...
All right, well, I'm not at all opposed to it. I think it's a good word, but I just want to communicate, we're understanding.
We don't have all the answers.
Okay.
Mayor, if I might add, this is a, this 353 program like this, this is actually a tool that's used, you know, in several places in the state. The City of Independence in particular has probably done about seven of these plans and they use it mostly for residential. For me, it's a great success. The City of Belton recently adopted a plan like this and I'm working with the City of Harrisonville right now to do that. So pretty popular and pretty effective tool for essentially the city to identify an area where they'd like to see light and then truly encouraging these property owners to take advantage of the program. It's a, it's a great program.
I think those force requirements will be able to still know who will work with them and where to go.
So we reach into Excelsior Springs and their, their successful, their downtown area, 353 and that's the end of this.
And Steve, I've spoken with, and Andy, you may have as well, I've spoken with the USDA here in Sedalia and they consider Sedalia rule.
Yeah, no, that meeting, I, I, you know, I wandered into that meeting, I think, or that one meeting in San Diego out today and was really impressed with the USDA. Yeah, they really want to help.
So next, who will be correct or wrong?
We need a motion of approval. Motion of approval.
Second.
Resolution 1943. A resolution of the City Council of Sedalia is accepting and supporting the adoption of the Chapter 353 Property Tax Abatement Midtown Residential Area Program Guideline.
Second.
Okay.
All right.
Close, thank you.
Next, I have a letter license to...
We have one new license for Herschel Wythe Doing Businesses, BFW Post 2591 at 121 South Ohio Avenue for a picnic license and one renewal for Cappy Getz Doing Businesses, Break Time 3084 at 318 West Broadway for package liquor.
Herschel, approve and block.
Second.
Mayor.
Hi.
We got stereo, man.
Anybody here, if they want to make some comments to the city council? Any from the council, want to make any comments?
I thought the Veterans Day celebrations were great and, you know, we need to remember our vets every day, not just Veterans Day, but it was a great celebration.
A lot of them suffered. And then our TCH for our family.
Hardwaring to see those kids.
So council, anybody else?
I really don't believe you've got people, you've just been telling them.
No, it was delivered.
I don't think I remember.
Do we need a motion to reach that or do we need a motion to adjourn to closed-door session?
Go to closed-door session.
Okay. By motion, you go to closed-door session, if shown in subsections one and two, provide statute.
Sorry. Oh, olden.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Boggs?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Frost? Foster?
Yes.
Hey, John. Good job.
There's one.
I want you to drink. I have a question with your... That all can stay here, it just goes up.
There's one.
This conference will now be recorded.
Well, maybe we should. You can even hear, we'll do the.
Second, we're second. Roll call, roll call please.
I'm here.
I'm here.
Hold on now, just a second. Uh, Lehman?
Still here.
Oldham?
Not here.
Dawson?
Here.
Bogus? Richardson?
Yeah.
Cross?
Yeah.
Foster and Bliss?
Here.
Okay.
We can adjourn. We're closed. Set a hold on issue, right?
Bill number two thousand twenty-one one sixty-nine, an ordinance authorizing a right of first refusal agreement between the City of Sodalia, Missouri and Agrarian Technology Development Company LLC for property commonly known as Spring Fork Lake.
Second reading.
Bill number two thousand twenty-one one sixty-nine, an ordinance authorizing a right of first refusal agreement between the City of Sodalia, Missouri and Agrarian Technology Development Company LLC for property commonly known as Spring Fork Lake. Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
All in favor?
You're never here, so we have to give you our.
Listen to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Thank you all.